The following program is made possible by First State Bank. Offering secure online and mobile banking. First State Bank is ready to serve your financial needs with locations in Warren, Hermitage, and Hampton. First State Bank. The Difference is Leadership. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
Meeting, do I have a motion to approve? I know that we approved the minutes as presented.
Second. A motion and second to approve the minutes, is there any discussion? If not, okay.
I have an readiness on page four, and it's just for informational purposes. Under the Community and Economic Development Committee, it's just a blanket statement that Mrs. Women stated that she would answer questions from any council member. There was some discussion concerning DCEDC meetings, events at Moore Bay. There was a couple of points, facts that she shared, and I went back and reviewed my notes and played my recording, and she, Alderman Telfrey, had made comments as it related racial comments, and she stated that, she stated that at the DCEDC meeting, that the DCEDC meetings went smoother than the Warren City Council, and she wanted to apologize. And to me, those were noteworthy facts that should be a part of the minutes.
Okay.
But that, what she referred to wasn't what I was talking about. When I let it go, then she brought the meeting out, or it wasn't what I was talking about.
That's what she said.
Yeah, I was talking about the point of the racial makeup of the city council. What's pointing, the meeting she was talking about, I had no idea about.
Okay, so approve the minutes with the additions to be made?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, by a show of hands. Unanimous? Ms. Marshall, a voice vote. Alderman Marshall?
Yes.
Did you hear the motion?
Yes.
You vote yes?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay. All right, moving right along, city clerk's report.
Statement of revenues and expenditures, general fund receipt. Your date, $2,524,658.24. Revenue in administrative, $1,422.60. Revenue in law enforcement, $81,298,41. Revenues, $980, sorry, expenditures, $985,654.84. Revenue in fire department, $24,450.73. Sanitation revenue, $593,198.40. Building cost revenue, $16,186.40. District court revenue, $60,206.61. Municipal building expenses, $34,64.52. Revenue in recreation, $9,792.80. Constitution revenue, $6,874.19. Expenses, $18,696.24. Roman daycare center revenues, $3,775. Expenses, $5,005,60. Children range revenue, $21,805.12. Senior citizens center expenses, $1,522.50. Revenue in other, $4,000. Expenses, $988,20. Airport revenue, $5,616.94. Expenses, $18,672.11. Revenue in economic development, $50,000. Street fund revenue, $428,440.24.
Move that we approve the financial statement as presented by the city clerk. I got a motion and second to approve the financial statement. All those in favor, any questions?
No.
Any, all those in favor, Ms. Marshall, did you have a question?
Angela Marshall, yes, approved.
Okay, so all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, it's a none. A none. Get out of us. Yeah.
Okay. You should have a copy in your tax balances for the month of October. Okay, city sales revenues tax received for October, $78,30.25. For year-to-date total, $766,148.70, up by 2% this time of next year. County sales received, $53,178.79 for year-to-date total. $519,863.66, and there are about 2% as well. You should have a copy of district court report. And that is my report.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Moving on to my report, we've got some board reappointments, reappointments, and then one new appointment, Rick Strattner, another five years to the Aviation Commission. These individuals have been contacted and have agreed to serve again.
I know that we approved Rick Strattner, we didn't really do them one by one, since...
Second. Okay, motion and second to reappoint Rick Strattner to the Aviation Commission. All those in favor, vote of, raise your hands or say yes.
Angela Marshall, yes.
Okay, all right. Curtis Junior Blankenship, Parks and Recs Commission, another five.
That we motioned to.
Yes, ma'am, okay. Curtis Blankenship to Parks and Rec Commission, five years.
Vote that we approve Curtis Blankenship Jr.
Sir.
Motion and second to reappoint Curtis Blankenship Jr. to Parks and Recs Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hands or say yes.
Yes.
Okay. Elaine Wright, Parks and Recs Commission, reappointment.
So.
Second. A motion and second to reappoint Elaine Wright. All those in favor, show by hands or say yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then the appointment, the new appointment would be Rob Reek to the Parks.
Second.
We have a motion and second to appoint Rob Reek to the Parks and Recs Commission. Any discussion? If none, all of those show by raise of hands and a yes. Ms. Marshall?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that concludes my report. Public comments. Aldermen want to be recognized, Ms. Anderson?
I was actually looking for Ms. Janice Smith, and I don't see her, but she contacted me today relating the trailer that is on, I believe that's Cloquette Street, across from where her home is. She's had to contact the police on numerous occasions as it relates that trailer. We were told, I believe, October 31st was some type of timeframe, and she was wanting us to at least share an update with her. She was going to try to be here, but she asked if she was not, so she's in Watford. She asked if I would bring her up.
Do you want Mr. May to come in and address that now, or are you going to wait?
If you don't have the information, please ask him to come.
Okay. Mike, May?
Just got it.
I thought she told me she had talked to you.
Well, she had talked to me earlier, and then I talked to Mike, but if nothing's been done, I'm unaware.
Okay.
Did you hear the...
That was on Cloquette Street.
That's trailer.
The trailer, yes, ma'am. Mobile home on Cloquette Street, the water was cut off the day after the city council meeting, when we said we were going to cut it off. I was contacted by the, evidently the renter's mother last month, and she asked me why the water was cut off. She went to pay the water bill, and I explained to her that that mobile home could not be rented, and that the occupants needed to vacate the property. And Ms. Smith is informing that they're still staying there, so they do not have any water at this time. As far as my office, that's about as far as we can go at this time.
So it's nothing, you're saying that there's nothing else as it relates to the city of Warren is cutting off the water, and that it ends there?
Well, we're not going to force them out, but I don't have the authority to actually physically remove them, so.
I guess I'm trying to, so I can talk intelligent to her. So you're saying that the city of Warren cut the water off, and that ends their responsibility for the city? Is that what I'm hearing from you?
That is one of the weapons that we have, and that's the one that we've employed at this time.
And there's nothing, no other avenue that the city of Warren is planning on? And the reason I'm asking you is because she's going to be asking me these questions, and I want to make sure that I give her the correct answer.
That is the only utility that I have the authority to cut off, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and there's, you have nothing else on your to-do list that you will be doing as it relates that mobile home?
We are going to send letters to the occupants of the mobile home, yes, ma'am.
You will be?
Sending letters to the occupants themselves requesting that they vacate the property.
Okay, now, she did say that, and I want to say she told me that she had copies of rent receipts where this renter is paying rent of $600 per month.
She in the water vault? Yeah.
Okay, I'll let her know. Let me make sure that I'm understanding you, because I was hoping she was going to be here to address it herself, but she's not, that the water has been turned off, and the next step is that the city will be sending letters to the individuals that's renting the trailer.
Yes.
Okay, all right, and anything else you may hear back from her? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Did they, when you sent, did you have to send letters before the water was turned off?
We send letters to the owner of the property.
Okay, so it wasn't to the renters, it was to...
No, we deal with the property owner themselves.
Okay.
But it's my understanding through neighbor that the renters are aware of it, but we're going to make it official by actually sending them. Sorry if I let it to them.
So if there's no water, what about the sewer?
Technically, they can't live there, but I don't have the authority to remove them.
So does anybody have the authority to remove them?
Good question.
Do you know?
So I'm sending it to you.
Ask Mr. Mike. Does anybody have the authority? Sir?
You have to go through the sheriff's.
Who goes to the sheriff's office? The complaining neighbors, or? I would think that they would go to the health department.
Yes. We'll be with no running water all day.
No water, we'd be a healthy division.
To get them evicted, you gotta go to the sheriff's office.
That would be the owner of the property.
Yeah, the owner of the property.
Owner of the property says that since it was COVID right now, he can't evict, that's what he told me, so I don't know, I don't have run property, I don't know what the rules and regulations are, but they have to follow them. That was one of the excuses that he gave me, is that he was unable to evict because of COVID. Now, I don't know whether that's accurate or not, I have no idea.
Thank you, I'll give this to...
Here she comes.
This Janice.
Coming.
Oh, she's coming. Can you just hold on, please?
I think she's going to come around, so you may want to, I don't know how you're going to do it. Let me see.
Hello, everybody. God bless you all, just made it into town. Thank you for this opportunity. I came to speak about issues I've been having on Cloquette Street. Residents have been there almost a year to this date, and the owner, Mr. Hadley, was told when he purchased that trailer that he could not rent a trailer in the city limits. Well, I'm here to tell you, he's been rented ever since he's been there. And some of the people that came in were pretty nice, I wouldn't have had any problem with these people, they had been nice, just coming into the little quiet neighborhood. But they have been burning after hours, they have been shooting off firearms, also they have traffic in and out, they blowed up the back of the trailer with a generator. We have a chief here that can testify to that, and it's my suspicion that they're dealing drugs, but that's another story. But I came here to see where the city stand, because as of the 14th of October, the water meter was removed, so there were no water. And I was also told that as of the 30th of October, Mr. Hadley was supposed to be removing them from the premises, where they put up Christmas tree lights, everything, so it doesn't look like they're going anywhere, anytime, so.
I didn't tell them that far.
I'm here to tell it all, because I've been over in that area over 30-some years, and the other residents have been there over 40-some years, and we have a little nice, peaceful, quiet neighborhood, we have children over there, and I have spoken to them several times, it's a nuisance, they have trash in the backyard, they came out of the burnt room, and I've given them Mike's number, let them know that they said it would pick it up free of charge. The young man thanked me, but they never moved, and I've sent this him some pictures showing that they have made a fence out of chalk, different colors, I thought it was for Halloween, but it's still up to this day. They just ran a lane from the burnt room to the utility shed, and then hung, looked like canopies, different colored canopies, I guess to block my view, because I have cameras. I had to install cameras on my property. I'd just really like to know where the city stand, and what's going on with it.
Mike had already addressed the issue, we were jumping ahead of you, but if, Mike, if you want to kind of step just a little bit to the door and just tell her what you've already covered.
Now, we're going to send letters to the occupants themselves. So far, the city authority typically goes to the owner of the property, we've been dealing with Mr. Hadley. I'm going to inform the renters that they have to vacate the mobile home, and I've already talked to their mother, who evidently pays her rent and water bill for them, because she wanted to know why the water was turned off to the trailer. I told her that they were in violation of our mobile home regulation, and that they could not occupy that mobile home, they had to move out. And she said she understood, and I was under the impression that she was going to move them out, or quit paying the rent for them, or whatever, essentially, they're like, still there.
Yeah, they're still there. She doesn't live there, the mother doesn't live there.
No.
So what tax plan are you going to give them? You say you're going to send them letters.
Send them letters between them, if they have to vacate the mobile home.
Would it be a regular letter certified?
Certified.
Which they probably won't sign.
Yeah. Anytime that we mail a letter, we mail one regular, two, and add renes, and one certified that they're there. And if they're undeliverable, take them, we get them both back.
Well, if one is deliverable, the one that's not certified will be delivered, but certified will be returned.
Yes.
Will we be looking at it after Christmas?
Well, as Mike was saying, we go ahead and explain to her, like you were explaining to the council about the eviction.
Well, eviction is up to the owner of the property, and that's not something we perceive to evict somebody by, I'm not threatening them, but they need to vacate their mobile home, they're in violation.
And sanitary.
Seems like there's something that could be done, I mean, because Mr. Hadley won't, I mean, it doesn't matter, he's not in the...
Our law says if we can remove the mobile home, we can pick it up and move it.
Hook it up free.
It's never been done, and there are several other issues besides just moving the mobile home, there's some things attached to it, it's, it could end up being, I can't warn you, but we can't go that far.
Well, let the record show that Mr., I've spoken with Mr. Hadley several times, and he claimed that they are not paying rent, and due to the coronavirus, he cannot evict them. I spoke to the resident, she said she has receipts to show that they are paying rent, and she also has a house that she can move into, so she was boasting about that. So I let her read the text that Mr. Hadley sent me, sure that he was going to evict them, and did I know anyone that wanted to buy the trailer, so she was shocked about that, that he was even talking about evicting them, but like I say, the rent is $600, and she says she's paying, and Mr. Hadley says she's not. So evidently, they are paying the rent.
Where is it?
But he's just playing, you know, each party, telling the city one thing, and telling them something, but I have text messages to show where he said they're not paying, and she said they are paying rent. Y'all can hook it up, I will help you. I know some people, hook it up and move it. I mean, this is serious. We cannot sleep, I have to get up at 4:45, y'all know, I drive pan blue. It's becoming really horrific for me to get into risk, because they have traffic just in and out, and it's, you know, people with pipes, and now they booed around to the side of the trailer, where you can't see the activity that's going on unless you come on the side street. And I mean, they have a lot going on, even some of the neighbors said that some of the people have been like spaced out and standing on their porch, over in the wee hours of the morning, they threatened to shoot them if they don't get off their porch.
Well, Mike, I'll ask you to get with the city attorney, and just see if we're, I mean, you've kind of spelled out to us what we can do, and we've kind of done everything that we can, but see if there's any other legal action we can take, and...
There's nothing been on the books about COVID.
Yes, good point.
Health Department, anything, I need you. Because, again, if there's children involved in the home, the health department can remove those children, the home has no water, they have the authority to do that, and the adult home, I don't think that they can do anything with the adult, but children are kids.
They have children in the home. They have children in the home.
Well, it likes to be that, no matter if it's a building, fixture, a trailer, or whatever, if you violate the code that sanitation lies, good luck, something will be done. I mean, you go to some places, there is a area that, just want to make sure that it's clean, folks are not going to want to leave there if you're not. And I can see what Janice, what Janice is talking about, she's getting up and being harassed, she keep a place up, and then the next place is not done, so why invest? I'll give a side, and he's been to us, and told, and we've told him he couldn't do that.
Okay, maybe tomorrow, if Mr. Clayton has some time, you can go and, y'all can look into legal action against Mr. Hadley.
And can we keep Ms. Smith informed?
Absolutely.
Please, thank you.
All right, I thank you for your time. All right. Y'all support the United States Postal Service.
You're a big help.
May I come one other question?
Okay.
And that item is, you had mentioned, I'm not sure if it was at a agenda meeting or a city council meeting, that you were unaware as to what your limits were as it related, not having to get council approval, and I told the council that it was the $10,000 limit. However, I was going to go back and see if I could find like the minutes to it, and you said that the administration had looked and could not find anything to that effect. And I have looked, and I've looked, and I've looked. The only thing that I have found has been those same notes that I found when I initially shared that information, and that was that the mayor did have a $10,000 spending limit, and it really was for an emergency situation when you could not get a form together or established, and then the mayor was to have justification of that. And then prior to 2018, the amount was $5,000. So that was strictly my notes, and I'm going to give everyone a copy of my notes, but I have looked in boxes, there may be another box somewhere, but I have not actually found the minutes.
Well, like I said, we went through the minutes, and we also went through the ordinances, and we didn't find anything on record.
That was due to a bid process that...
It was a special process.
We was doing, and it was time sensitive, and I said that the time was going to cause a problem.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else from an alderman that would like to be recognized? If not, we will move to the sign-in, and we have Mr. Roger George in the audience, and you have a letter. Mr. George, if you want to come up and to the podium, and if they have any questions or just explain what it is you're interested in doing. They all have a copy of the letter that you brought to the office today.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and I would like to thank you for all y'all serving and trying to take care of city business. I hate Zach, he's been here forever.
That's okay.
He and I served together for about 14 years, so that's been a long time ago. Now, we're looking at, we have been left, we have 19 employees in our office, and we've really outgrown it, and I've been looking around, trying to find a place that we can go. 65% of our business out of the Warren office is that side of Warren, so, you know, we have a large geographic area, and I can't see going out and building... see going out and building a new building and spending three or $400,000 to have the size. And I checked and been by the armory several times looking and I was just wondering if the city would be interested in selling the armory. Uh, I'd be willing to purchase and have a deal in there if we ever sold it. We could sell it back to the city. You'd have the first rate. And it may not work out, but I don't want to spend a lot of time getting estimates on the inside. I've got a verbal estimate on what it would cost to redo the inside of it. Uh, and we got a bit of concrete and a lot more heat in there, but I don't want to proceed with what I'm going if there's no interest in the city getting rid of that building. And I know in hard economic times, uh, maintenance and, and everything on that building, insurance and stuff, it's probably, I don't mean this ugly, but it's probably a dead horse to the city of this level. So, and we'd like to stay here in Warren. Uh, we do have the option. And this Corona bill has changed up the way a lot of people does business, uh, with, uh, everybody going to EFT on their checks and stuff. We have very little foot traffic anymore. So, uh, I put in there, we have a bill and speaking up to hold the Warren office in the Monticello office in Monticello, but I've been blessed that the people Warren's been good to me. So I want to stay here. But we do have nineteen employees. So it is a little small industry for the city. So my question is, would the city be interested in trying to sell the armory?
As in Warren? And then I want to look at appraisal for.
Not that I'm aware of.
I think it's something that we can definitely discuss, table it and discuss it and get back to, I mean, from, that's the way I feel.
Yeah.
We can definitely look at it.
Mm. He, Mr. Clayton has already looked at, at how the process would, would have to be taken care of for the city to be able to sell it. I think he, uh, looked into that for us.
And I might just say, sell it to me. You know, you can have a bid out there outside of the city hall. When you don't bring what you want, you don't have to sell it. But I'm just trying to explore all options at this point.
Is that the, on the building that you're looking at?
I'm looking at one more here in Warren, but, uh, is y'all a little street over there? That's the best street in Warren. Highest traffic count, more exposure. Uh, you know, it's a good, it's a good location. Uh, I've had to talk to AP and L about moving a pole and I had a contractor and we went inside of it. Some of it has got the old asbestos tail in it and we're thinking the big part in there, the insulation up there may be a asbestos tail in that thing. And it's leaking in a couple of places on the metal and it's been repaired once and some other place. But, uh, you know, and getting involved in asbestos too, you got major problem. Want to deal with this.
Yeah, I know that. We tabled the item and researched and that faces back.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of tabling, uh, this issue, uh, raise hand, uh, show of hands. Ms. Marshall, are you still with us? No. Okay. Roger, do you have a timeline? Do you need a, a time back?
You know, I don't want to wait six months.
Okay.
You know, what I'm saying is it'd be, you know, and it may be that it's economically, it wouldn't be feasible for me to go in and do the remodeling and everything I would want to do, you know? So, you know, I don't want to wait six months because I'm, I'm going to be pursuing other options.
I have another motion.
Okay.
And my motion is to refer to the Community and Economic Development Committee for a review.
Okay.
Within the next thirty days.
Thirty days. Okay.
Thank y'all so much.
Do y'all have a, do I have a second for the motion?
Second.
Okay. All the, any discussion? All those in favor by show of hands? And I guess we've lost Ms. Marshall. Okay. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Get back with you in thirty days.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh huh. And the way I understand it, Mr. Clayton, I mean, we'll have to bid it. The, the, we can't just out and outsell it. It'll have to be bid.
And it's correct. And it will be open to whomever that would like to bid on it as well.
Okay. All right. Uh, as you know, our, our police chief is out. He had a couple of setbacks, but he's, he's, I've talked to him today or text with him today. He's doing much better. Um, y'all have his report in front of you. If you have any questions, he told me I could call him. Uh, if not, then we'll move on. Alderman Fraser, you don't have anything on police?
I don't.
Okay. Uh, fire chief, Mike, Mr. Chief Ashcraft?
Good evening. Uh, y'all have a copy of my report. During the month of October, we had twenty-four calls. We had one major structure fire at Armstrong. Took us six hours to, uh, control the dustbin, sawdust bin explosion, uh, down there. Uh, managed to get it out without harming any firemen. Uh, we had a bad extension, uh, vehicle accident in front of, uh, Pollock Gates, uh, the very night before. Just a few hours for a matter of fact. Uh, one of the worst ones I've seen in the city. Uh, then we had eighteen lit a fire on Smith Road. They had twenty-three other calls varying from false alarms to vehicle accidents. They give us three hundred and sixteen calls a year and seventy-four more than last year at this time. Uh, just want to let y'all know that Station One Bay has been undergoing overhaul, painting and updating inside. And y'all, if you drive by, you can see it all going on in there because the doors are wide open. We're really working on it. And that's all I have. None of them.
Okay. Any questions? Alderman Telfrey, do you have anything?
This day.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm moving, I'm moving slow, but can we go back to the, uh, police committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, at the last meeting, um, Alderman Telfrey brought up the situation about the, uh, dog situation where the person, uh, where a dog attacked, uh, packed that person and the response related to, uh, you have so much space that you can, that the dog catcher can utilize as it relates to picking up a dog. And that just kind of stuck with me. And I guess because I walk now in the neighborhood and there's just so many dogs running, do we have, I guess, Alderman, uh, Fraser, has your committee met and do you have any type of a plan or anything that your, your committee is looking at to help rectify that problem? Because that was a very bad situation and I almost encountered over the weekend and they didn't look vicious, but they were like little, small ones and they were like ready to, you know, to attack. And they're not like on a chain or anything. They just run up and down. Uh, this is on Sturgis Street. They just kind of run. They're pitiful dogs, but they, they have teeth. I saw their teeth.
Were they involved? Would that involve the dog catcher?
Yeah, the dog catcher, catcher needs to be called and, and I tell people that all the time. As soon as you see that, just give him a call and he will respond. If not, then call the police station or call me.
Like if we have a police, if we had a police meeting about, do we, I think Ms. Henderson's talking about the space, you know, when, he said that they didn't pick, they couldn't pick up all the dogs because they don't have space.
Right.
So.
We can talk about expanding the, the facilities, but I mean, that's if you want to.
Okay.
Pull that together. And just to let you know, they are trying their best to catch this dog that attacked the, the lady that Mr. Alderman Telfrey was talking about. And, I don't, I mean, they've been after this dog for several years.
Oh, really?
Yes, ma'am. It's a female and she is, she's got to be extremely smart because of the way she eludes them. She recognizes his truck. She knows when he's, when the truck's coming. We have police officers that are, I'm serious. We have police officers that have been trying to help him, uh, catch this dog. Um, it, it's, it's not from lack of effort that this particular dog has not been picked up.
Okay. That information was not shared with us. I mean, this is the first that I've, I heard of, I had just heard of the situation and then Alderman Telfrey brought it up and, and I mean, there are dogs throughout, you know, the city.
I had one on my road, on my street last week, but I carry it like a little stick. I mean, I don't want to, I mean, if I have to hit one, I guess I do, but. Just have your phone with you and whenever they do, then call the, call the, the, uh, animal control officer. And, uh, but yeah, you're right. We do have, and we have a leash law. We have a leash law.
We do have a leash law, yes.
We sure do.
How's, how's the lady doing? Does anyone know?
I talked to her last week.
Oh, good.
And she, she's reluctant to go outside as I can very well imagine, but she, she's doing good. She's doing good.
Well, that's good. Thank you for allowing me to go back.
That's okay. Uh, okay. Now sanitation, Mr. May, will you come back? Please?
Good evening, Jim. I've got a copy of my sanitation report. Uh, all the trucks are functional operation. Our trash has been, uh, picked up as it should be. Uh, anybody have any questions on sanitation?
I want to say thank you on behalf of Mrs. Butler and Mrs. Howard Butler and Mrs. Clark that lot was cleaned up. And I did not see any movement over, um, Etheridge and the corner of Phillips, the Matthews home that you stated was cleaned up twice a year. It has not been cleaned up at all this year. Uh, so do we have, uh, an update on that?
Matthews on Etheridge?
Mm-hmm. It's on, uh, the corner of Etheridge and Phillips.
Okay.
And it says there's a, a lot of nice newer low income homes that was built like right across. I mean, I mean, everyone is keeping their yards up. It looks really good except for, for that. And you stated at the last meeting that that particular lot along with the McCord lot was cleaned up twice a year and this one has not been cleaned up at all this year.
We haven't done our final cleanup. Uh, the grass is starting to stop growing and this month we're going to have those lots cleaned.
Okay. Do you know where I'm talking about? Do you know where Mrs.?
I believe.
Okay. Okay.
It's a lot and then there's a house next to it on Phillips. It's actually the same lot.
That is correct. Yes, that is correct. Okay. And then of course, you know, I bring my folder every month. So do we have anything listed on the listing that you have given us that the council needs to act on?
Yes, ma'am. It's in ready to go building codes. Uh, it's in your, uh, packet. Uh, we've got one property that, uh, is a request for condemnation at 306 Turner Street. For house removal and lot cleaning.
I vote that they city, uh, move forward with, uh, the house removal at 306 Turner.
Second. We have a motion in second to condemn the house at 306 Turner Street. Any discussion? All those in favor by a show of hands? And I guess we still lost Ms. Marshall. Did she call back?
I'm trying to find that one on this list here. So did.
This is a new letter. It was sent out last month.
Oh, got you. Okay. Cause I was going to say I, I was scratching the mop as we go. So.
On that same list, we have properties that have been condemned that are waiting cleanup.
Mm-hmm.
That's 523 North Marlin Street, uh, twenty Davenport and twenty-six Davenport. Uh, the Davenport properties, both of them have had, uh, we were able to get two prices. One of them was three times as high as the next one. And I have let the bid for both of those to be cleaned up. Contractor told me that, uh, he would get to them as quickly as he could, but indicated that it would be two to three weeks before he'd be able to get those done. The property at 523 North Marlin, um, we're still waiting a second price. We've got one price. It's astronomical, the price of it. So I would like to get another comparable price.
Where exactly is that one?
It's a two-story house that's kind of catty-cornered away from Darryl Harvey's old wedding shop.
Okay. Okay.
We sent letters to the owner, uh, since probably six, seven months ago. And since that time, they've removed all the doors and the windows out of the property and taken whatever woodwork that they could get out of anything of value. So, uh, it's basically a hole left. And, uh, it's, uh, the price we have is, in my opinion, too high, but hopefully we'll be able to get another price.
What do you call it, too high?
Uh, ten thousand.
Okay.
I think we can get it done for half or a little bit less than that, but that's what I'm hoping for anyway, if we, I'll get somebody else. Right now, the people that are in the business of having trackhoe, dump trucks and things like that are extremely busy with hauling dirt and construction, road work and things like that. Uh, when the weather gets a little wetter, uh, then their time freezes up and the price is making them down.
Anything from this major list that you gave us?
Um, that list should be updated with these properties here.
Okay. So I need to add those that are not on here to here, but none of them move up to condemnation, I guess is my question.
Uh, the ones that are on there, they should be, and I didn't bring that list with me.
I noticed you have Mr. Hatley's house on 113 booked out. It just says no changes, but this was dated back April 29.
Yes, ma'am. And we've discussed that house already.
I answer my question. Anything else? Mr. Mike? Thank you. Uh, street foreman, Mr. Davis?
How are y'all tonight? All right. We've been trying to keep up with the, uh, work requests, put in certain, two, two coves this month, uh, for people and, uh, tried to get the airport cut one more time. It's wet out there. So we get part of it. We won't get the other part. That's about all I've got.
I was asked a question by, um, a citizen as to what was the criteria to have your street cleaned?
What do you mean cleaned? We don't clean streets. We clean ditches sometimes, but we don't clean.
Okay. Well, the question was, I guess maybe in some cities you see like the little, do we do that here?
Normally. We don't have nothing to do it with.
Okay. All right. Well, you answered my question. I didn't think we did, but I said I will ask.
We have done a few little portions of places, Ms. Dorothy, but we, you just really don't have the equipment to do it with. You know, we don't have the streets we per, per se. So, and most of the time, the ones that we clean is curving gutter streets, just the regular streets that don't have a curving gutter. We're cleaning ditches out, but that's not all we do.
I will pass that. You, you do not do that.
Okay. Alderman Mosley?
Okay. We put out the bid on the streets. We received two. And I think we should, I would like to make a motion to accept the lowest bid with Kato Trucking, 10450. And that's a, correct me if I'm wrong. That's a ton, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
10450 a ton.
Sir?
Motion in second to accept the low bid for paving. Any questions? All those in favor by a show of hands? Unanimous? Okay. Anything else, uh, Alderman Mosley?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right. You have the B C D C slash chamber report in your packet. Uh, and then, uh, Community and Economic Development has met. Ms. Marshall is not here. Ms. Henderson, did she give you any?
Oh, she did. She said she was not here. She did email me the report. Sorry. I thought she was on the line. I don't think she's called back.
I didn't hear my phone buzz, so.
Okay. Bear with me and ring it up. Thought she was on the line. I would like for you to present the report from the Community and Economic Development meeting that was held on October 27th, 2020 in my absence. Here's the topics that was discussed at the meeting. Number one, we will re-advertise the RFQ for the city of Warren with a few modifications to the language to highlight and showcase what the city has to offer. We are planning to advertise nationally to get some potential advocates. The three committee members are to submit changes for final review. and I will schedule a meeting soon. Number two, the Facebook social media platform is an excellent way to let our citizens know what is happening in our wonderful town. Number three, make plans to recognize our city employees on a continuous basis, monthly or quarterly basis. Number four, there was a meeting held on Thursday, November 5th, 10:00 a.m. at B C E D C with Jim and other individuals from U A L R. Mayor Pennington didn't inform me about the meeting until about five minutes before it was to take place, and I wasn't able to rearrange my schedule and attend. At this point, I don't have a report. That ends the report as to what she emailed. And that meeting that she was referring to, they were just in town to meet, meet and say hello and to get started. And, uh, she happened to be in the office, and I had asked her to come down if she wanted to, uh, if she wanted to, you know, meet them. But, um, we did have a good discussion, and, uh, they will be back and with a proposal of some type to do, some type of an assessment for us. And that's, it's A E D I. It's the Arkansas Economic Development Institute that is housed at U A L R. And Jim Youngquist is who is she, who she is referring to. He is the director of that organization. Okay, moving to Ways and Means.
If I may add a little something to this, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir.
It seems like continually we pay people to advertise and put things out there for us. But like I always have said, our renewable resource here in economic development are our kids. And once again, I've gotten calls from about eight different states asking about the broadcast of the Razorback football game, wanting to know who Trey Lindbergh was, what was going on anymore, and of course, about the Pink Tomato Festival. Because one thing that we fail to overlook is the difference between advertising and publicity is, publicity is you came back. And advertising, you can buy a ton and not get the publicity that we receive from our students, counseling our district community. And sometimes I think we short our students for the great job that they do and the good stories that they are when they go out and do things, and we are always proud of them. They're continually doing a great job. And I would like to ask everybody if they get an opportunity to congratulate our youngsters for the great job that they do. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Ways and Means Committee, Alderman Henderson?
Yes, and, uh, I would like to pass out, uh, some information. Uh, of course, our committee members already have it, but I did make extra copies just in case they did not, uh, bring their copies, uh, with them.
One more handout.
First place, allow me the opportunity to thank Teresa Sandin for developing the proposed budget for the City of Moore Ways and Means Committee in an effort that we could review the proposed budget. Uh, each of you do have a copy of the proposed budget that was, uh, utilized at our meeting. Uh, and what I would do is I would give you, uh, an overview, and I will refer to, uh, various pages and let you know, uh, the items that are still under review and that we will be scheduling at least, uh, two more meetings. If you will, I gave you two sets of, of documents. One is just for your information. We had asked a question about step increases, and you will, uh, have that information just to carry with you to, uh, to look at and, uh, see that we do have step increases, not just for the police officers, but for the various, um, employees within, uh, the City of Moore. Okay, now, if you would, the packet that has the word Fire Department at the top, that was, that is the first sheet that we will review. And what Ms. Sandin did was she gave us the, uh, dollar amount as it relates percentages, and she broke them down by two percent, five percent, uh, ten percent, twenty-nine percent, and then you can look at the various departments. This is just an overview. If you would, on page one of your document that says General Fund, projected, uh, final annual actual from January through December of 2020, and then the right-hand corner is the proposed 2021 budget. On page one, and if you'll look at the bottom of the page, you will see that's where the numbers are. Uh, the only thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is at the old Armory, uh, the Armory Neighborhood Center, as is listed here, we do have one renter that is there, and that is Doug Spencer. And we did ask the question as to how much he was giving per month, and the revenue is, according to the mayor, is $300. Uh, if you would, on page three, go with me. On page three, you will see the total projected, uh, 2021 revenue, Uh, the shooting range, you will see that $7,000. Uh, there was no, um, mention of prospects of additional grant projects or anything that was, uh, shared at this particular meeting. Next page that I would like for you to look at, and I'm skipping pages where there's nothing that's unusual, um, on page number 10. Okay, on page number 10, where it says, uh, Economic Development Totals, uh, we did ask for a breakdown of that. If you would, under proposed 2021 budget, if you will stretch through the $54,000. And the mayor, uh, stated that the breakdown that she will be recommending or the proposed budget is recommending is B C E D C, $18,000. The, uh, museum, $2,400. Chamber, $18,000. Area Agency, $2,000, which, you know, we raised that $200 last year for fans and in hopes that air conditioners would be purchased, $2,000. And then, uh, at the industrial development, $30,000, given a total, if you would write in in that right-hand column, $70,400. However, during our Community and Economic Development, uh, meeting, we did not think that the $30,000 for industrial development was a realistic, uh, number, and the amount of $75,000 was, was thrown out. But that was not something that this committee, uh, is recording, uh, in this report until we actually received that data from the committee with the recommendation. If you would, go with me to page number 12. And at the top, you will see, uh, Animal Enforcement, uh, for '21. And if you'll look in 2020, it shows $5,775. 2021, $10,000. And car maintenance and repair, $30,000. Uh, you may want to just, uh, take note of both of those, uh, dollar amounts that's, that's listed. I think both of those are probably somewhat, uh, low. Uh, if you would, go to page 15. On page 15, um, listed under the, and you can read the, the top, but listed under the pool expenses, uh, you will see for 20, uh, 20, $10,500 was listed and, uh, projected for 2021, uh, $10,000. One of the things that we've heard at our council meeting, uh, is that, uh, the council would like to see some paint-up fix-up, uh, cleanup with the pool, uh, bring the pool, uh, up to snuff as it relates. A city pool that is open to all citizens that would like to, uh, actually utilize the services. Uh, and then I'll, I'll go into things that, uh, we are asking for additional information. Okay, if you would, go to me, go with me to the last page, on page number, uh, 18, under where you will see 2021 projected budget to include, uh, a 2% increase, and you can see what that, um, amount is. Now, there were no contracts presented to this committee for the committee, uh, to actually, uh, review, just for your information, because I knew someone was going to ask that question.
We're, we're getting those in as, as we speak. But I don't have an 18.
Mine starts at 14.
Stops.
You don't have a page 18?
Mine starts at 15.
Yeah, 15.
Oh, sorry, that my, my print, my print and paper ran out of paper and stuff for that. Okay, uh, then let me read. Uh, page 18 will have, uh, $3,218. I mean, $3,218,602.57. And that is the projected 2021 budget to include the 2%. Okay, going back to my narrative, items under review and items needing, uh, additional information. Alderman Frazier mentioned the possibility of a pandemic bonus for the employees. Uh, Alderman Mosley talked about, uh, some type of a, uh, meal function for employees. Uh, the need for additional, uh, streets. We also had a copy of the 19 streets that, uh, were developed from the street hearing. Uh, so the committee asked the chair and the members of the street committee if you would go back and look at those streets, and I'm sure that that is being worked upon to see, uh, the chairperson wa- is a part of this committee and stated that not, the whole street itself did not require, uh, work, but it was just parts of, uh, portions of streets. So, um, right now, we have, I believe, $125,000, uh, due to the fact that we, when we purchase large, uh, pieces of equipment or fire truck or sanitation truck, we normally finance those so that if we need to do something above, we can do that. And I know that that was a big discussion at our last city council, uh, meeting. So we do have a copy of all 19 of those streets, and at our next meeting, we will, um, look at, uh, adding additional, uh, funds as a recommendation. The repair, paint-up fix-up of the city pool, we had asked Alderman Frazier, since she was the person that was out there on the day today. I did notice in, um, the handout that we received today that it appears that the Parks and Rec is doing that, but this committee was still like, since she has firsthand knowledge of this, that she would still move forward with getting that information. Uh, department requests for employees. You have received emails, uh, coming from the mayor's office, uh, from the various, uh, departments. The chief passed out his hard copy at our last meeting, uh, recommendations. And I do have a wage, uh, study booklet of surrounding, uh, cities as to what their salaries are that I will have at our next meeting. And you do have the pay raise and included, we did ask a question about, uh, police cars, uh, one police car, uh, in the proposed budget. And that is pretty much everything that we covered. At this time, I would like to see if the 16th of November, uh, is good for you, Alderman Frazier and Alderman Mosley, at 5:00 for our next meeting, and if we do not conclude, if November the 18th at 5:00 is also available.
I think it's good for me.
Good for me.
Okay, so we're going to ask Ms. Charlotte if she was scheduled. Uh, the meeting that is advertised for November the 16th at 5:00 p.m. here in the courtroom, uh, for our next meeting. And that ends the report that I have as it relates to budget. And I will now ask if you have any questions of the budget committee. Our mayor.
The updates that you were talking about, it, I mean, I, I have a copy of the, of the updates added that reflect the, the budget.
Which we will get at the next meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you so much.
Find the balance.
All right, then the next item that we have, uh, committee, it sounds like we did good, so. So I'm gonna move on fast. Uh, number two is the, uh, Arkansas Municipal League, uh, programs that we, uh, participate, uh, in, and each of you do have a copy of this, uh, in your, in your folder. The Arkansas Municipal Charges, the optional, uh, Municipal League Defense Program, and the, uh, C D L drug testing. We, uh, normally, we do not, normally do not, uh, participate in the, uh, testing, drug testing piece, uh, of it. So is this something that you're wanting us to do this time?
I think this just came, Ms. Helen will have to explain, I mean, this.
Well, with the drug testing, that's something that the state does for free.
That is correct, but it's an amount listed of $1,260, so we normally approve it, but that is not something that we have been. I move that we, uh, approve the Arkansas Municipal League Defense, uh, program in the amount minus the $1,200.67.
All right, motion in second to approve the Municipal League's, um, annual charge for, uh, defense. Any discussion? All those in favor, a show of hands? Some kind of unanimous there?
That ends, uh, the report of the Ways and Means.
Thank you. Uh, okay, Planning Commission did not meet. Aviation Commission did not meet. Uh, they will be meeting before next, uh, council meeting. You have the Water and Sewer Commission, uh, Minutes and Financials with you. Uh, Housing Authority, you have there.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, on the Housing Authority, if you'll look at item number, uh, six, seven, eight, and nine, Resolution 302, New 2021 Fair Market Rent. Uh, and I, and you probably can't answer this, but could you find out what those new market rent amounts are? Under six, seven, eight? And then it says new utility allowance for, uh, Quin River, all the way down to nine.
Six, seven, eight, and nine?
Yes.
You won't, okay.
Just for informational, uh, purpose. And then, uh, at one of our council meetings, Alderman, Marshall had asked the, uh, commission allotments, and we never received that information. Do you, do you have that amount?
Uh.
There were certain commissioners that received an allotment, and.
I asked, and I think the only ones that I was informed that, that get reimbursement is the Water Department, the Water Commission.
The Housing Authority, does it?
Ms. Helen, do you know?
I, I will ask, but I mean, I.
I just started up on that when I was looking for the, uh, mayor's limit. I started up on the, that in my notes.
Okay, I'll ask mine.
But is the, uh, Water Commission is what you're saying?
That's what I was informed. That was, that was the information I got when I looked into it.
Okay, uh, we're ready for parks and rent, and Mr. Wagner, share with us.
Good afternoon. I'm really having a confused report, just, um, with the grass falling down, we've been doing a little more maintenance around the park in certain areas. Just trying to get, uh, get everything kind of cleaned up and touched up and kind of a little remodeling, and we're starting to go, do a little, uh, painting out at the sports complex, repaint the building, the bathrooms, and all that kind of stuff. So that's what we'll be doing probably the next few weeks. And I got your, uh, poll stood up, Mr. Whibley.
This is.
You know, there's a lot of kids, and Alderman Fraser and I talked about, there's a lot of kids in that area that play basketball, like, in the streets instead of utilizing the basketball goal that's over there at the pool. Um, I don't know what we can do to get them out of the streets. That's kind of dangerous.
They, I mean, they actually have a vault, uh, a.
Go run that one up white house.
And I told, I told Ms. Henderson that we had put nets up and they just disappear or get torn, and the kids still played across the street, but we had the goals there.
Okay, no other comments or questions? Thanks to Mr. Wagner. Okay, well, I've already gone to the Housing Authority. Cultural Center, you have that, Alderman Fraser. We haven't gone out to bid yet, and I just got that email before this meeting, is that, um, I don't have the date, but we're gonna go out. He, uh, kind of, the architect did send me an email saying we're getting ready to put out the repairs for the, uh, girls' bathroom. We'll be going out for a bit. I was forward.
Oh, yeah.
I will send you that email so you'll know. Is there any unfinished business?
One more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I know we all received this, uh, the letter from the Legislative Audit, uh, where we went back. I know, you know, we were written up on two things. One was, uh, not having a, some type of contract or something in place for the, uh, rental space, and I guess that is something that the council needs to, uh, put a motion on to put a contract in place, uh, with the, uh, with the chamber. And then the other was segregation of, of duties with the, uh, Police Department. And there, what happened at the, uh, committee meeting that was held.
The only one that was, uh, brought before Legislative Audit was the rent with the chamber, and, uh, they discussed it. I was able to, I didn't attend because they didn't suggest that we do, but I did view it. And I had spoken to a couple of, of committee members, uh, beforehand and explained, and it was, it was, um, that no, no action against us was taken.
Very good. I just think that.
And I had sent a letter, not a letter to the Legislative Audit, but to the, uh, to a couple of the commissioners explaining the situation of the, the word-of-mouth longevity and that we would be taking care of it in the future.
And you sent that to us. We do have, we do have that, and, and thank you, but we just hadn't heard anything.
It was, it was, everything went fine.
Okay, thank you.
As, as in regard to the, the vote we had on the highway tax, and then they got sued because they was using the money wrong, so since they can't use the money to do what they were stealing it for on those six-line interstate, are we gonna get our money back for industrial development on five thirties?
I'm not aware.
That, that money was originally taken up for, was the industrial development for, uh, rural area. And that was just for the interstate, which was full line. And since they went to court and the court told them they couldn't use that money for those six-line super projects because it was for us, I was just wondering what we was gonna get our money back and finish that project.
That'll be a question above my head, sir. You can, I can give you some paper, but call.
I know, I got it. Does anybody know the reason why five thirties is at the end and we got that break in the middle from the South City? It was to prevent this very thing that we support. They said if we started right here on the bottom end and start that, all the land is purchased, everything else is shot out, and they had that break right there, South City, to keep from finishing it out, but that was the reason why the end right here on two seventy-eight was started and went so far and they just stopped it because they was stealing the money to finish it. And we started right here on the bottom end because you know they was gonna finish on the up end. And still they're going around us with that money.
Okay, um, I mean, are you asking us to do something?
Well, there's a thing about it, we, we vote, we voted to support. Now, as they went to the Supreme Court, and they said they couldn't use it on those super projects like we're gonna do on thirty and then forty interchange in Little Rock, and said it was specifically for industrial development in rural area. If we voted to, to back, it seemed like we all do something to make sure we get it.
So have you, I mean, have you had a chance to conquer the league?
No, I conquer. I mean, I, I was keeping up with it and reading it, but I'll have to, maybe if Alderman Hellfree, if you'll talk to me, maybe we can, we can work something out.
Well, you, you, it probably does, just put him on, talk to him some different about it. He was one of the ones in there with it deal when we made up the plan to start down here before we would go, because Jay Dickey appropriated the money for us way back then. And they stepped, kept sending it out of our park towards, over on the west side of the state. They finished their interstate park with their money. And then we had folks coming in here making deals, and then we ended up with nothing. And now they still trying to take it.
Yes, sir. And we celebrate, uh, Wednesday, Veterans Day, I don't care. Think of that somewhere. You know, you think about a person being ten thousand miles away from home, just think about it, and, uh, things you have to go through.
Absolutely.
I just want to let you know it's not an easy thing, uh, to do, so think about it, think about us.
We appreciate your service, sir.
You all ready?
No, not yet. We got, we got.
I move that we pay the bills.
Second. We have a motion to pay the bills in a second. All those in favor, show of hands. All right, thank you. You see the announcements. Uh, the meeting for next month is set. Agenda meeting on the tenth, and Monday, the fourteenth, will be the city council meeting. Now, sir, we may. All those in favor?